Okay, we're live.
Okay, um, thank you very much and welcome to Winchester School Committee's first meeting. Paul, I will call to order at six thirty-five P M. On September eleventh, twenty twenty-five, and we will begin with public comment. Followed by Chair and Superintendent remarks, including school opening update and the MSBA Morocco visit. Consent agenda consisting of consideration of minutes from June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Consideration of approval. And the manual, we are actually going to pull that from the consent agenda and table it until our next meeting on September twenty-fifth. Also, policy DDA, Special Education Stabilization Fund Corrected Procedure will be included on the consent agenda. Then that will be followed by reports consisting of fall town meeting articles, the Mystic Building Transfer and a demographic study. Then consideration of approval of student acceptable use of technology policy, which is policy I J N D B. A P policy, put in a few more. Consideration of the approval of school committee's vision statement, which we will also be tabling until the next meeting. Review of W P S twenty thirty-five year operational needs, a working draft and consideration of first readings from a policy. Sections D and L. Those are on fiscal management and community relation or educational agencies, I believe. And then executives and executive session, the purpose of which is number three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. And then consideration of ratification of the unit B collective bargaining agreement and then followed by adjournment. So.
So we will be coming back from executive session?
We will come back. So with that, we will return to public comment and. So, public comment shall be for a period of twenty minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. All remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting. And public comment is not a discussion, a debate or a dialogue between citizens and the community. It's a chance for a citizen to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. Written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting for our review and consideration at an appropriate time. And going to the address schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org. And should the chair believe that issue or question falls outside the purview of the school committee. Chair may request that citizens direct it to the appropriate person or body so that matter is given proper consideration. So according to our list, we have one person here for public comment, Dr. Brian Bernalia.
Should I say they don't?
Yes, please come forward.
Thank you very much. My name is Brian Bernalia. I live at nineteen Sergeant Road. I'm also the chair of the planning board and I'm here tonight as the chair of the planning board. Actually, sort of a happy little accident, as Bob Ross might say. I was in a meeting the other day and I overheard discussion of G I S mapping maybe being on the agenda coming soon. And I then reached out to both the chair and the vice chair to learn a little bit more about this. And I thought to myself, this is something that there's actually a lot of synergy with what the planning board is looking to do. We would really like to be able to increase our G I S capabilities. And this just got, dart me thinking, we've actually have over the next few years, a goal to actually increase our G I S capabilities. So I reached out to the town planner. I know the town planner reached out to, I believe, Andrew, as far as sort of seeing where this might all connect. But I saw it was on your agenda for tonight. If it's going ahead this fall, there's a very tight timeline. Obviously, you guys would need to get it on if it's a, some sort of request for funds from a town meeting would have to go in by next Friday. The planning board has not discussed this, only learned about it on this past Friday. We have a meeting next week. I could put it on our agenda for something that we could find a way to have the synergy between our two, our two boards and indeed actually between the two departments, the school committee, excuse me, the school department and the planning department. Because to be honest with you, I don't have any idea how to use G I S software and I'm never gonna know.
You're in good hands for me.
So that would be something someone else, that would be something someone else would be doing. But I just wanted to make sure that our boards were aware. So you guys are gonna maybe talk about it tonight, perhaps, I don't know. If it's something that you guys decide to move forward with, I'll bring it back to my board on Tuesday and see if we can, if the stars align, if we can co-sponsor, if we can just try to have some sort of scope that works together. And we can go to town meeting and all be the one happy family that we try to be. So I'm just here to say, we would really like to have some sort of collaboration if that's possible. So thank you very much for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Bernalia.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Is there one on the list? Okay, seeing none, we will close up public comment and we will move on to the next part of our agenda, which is Superintendent and Chair remarks.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the brand new Lynch Elementary School. If you haven't had a chance to come here and didn't get in the building, just welcome. One of the things that was especially gratifying for me when I was actually walking in tonight was seeing community kids of all ages out there on the brand new playground and the turf field and, you know, one kid was just throwing bombs to another kid. And families sitting down and, you know, all I could think about, and I always go back to this, was my first year here coming to Lynch for the first time, the old Lynch, and trying to figure out why the kids were in the parking lot. The white balls were going around the parking lot and the cones and the redirect. So it's really kind of nice to see that we have a playground where it's not in a parking lot. And I would say that in general, it's been, I mean, it really has been a pretty smooth opening for a brand new facility. There's a lot of punchless items left as there would be on any project, but there's nothing significant, which is, well, you know what, let me just say. As we sit here, there is nothing significant. So the E F P B C continues, as you know, I'm a member of the E F P B C, they continue to be and discuss those items and they are really all over the O P M and the contractors to make sure that the items get taken care of. So I think we're all in really good hands. The opening in general, I think, was, was, was great. We do have a, you know, because I just want to get as much mileage out of these pictures as I can. Especially lately. So just a reminder that all of our, almost all of our playgrounds, V O, we have a brand new playground at Lincoln. V O had upgrades, including new surface. We have a, some new equipment at Morocco and we have new where, Andrew?
At Ambrose.
Ambrose, there's some new equipment as well, thank you. So we really tried to hit everywhere and that is in, thanks to Town Meeting and the E P W who funded that. It's made, it's a, it's just made a huge difference and the kids, especially at Lincoln. I just, they just love it. It's the same kind of experience, like any time of day, show up and their family's there and that's exactly what we're seeing. We have at Morocco, a really significant renovation. And we already kind of talked about this, but I just want to thank and also give my admiration and appreciation for both the town and facilities, working with the school department, Andrew and others here to get this done. This is about eight hundred thousand dollars worth of work done in, in less than three months. So they said we couldn't do it. We proved wrong. So we're small, but we're mighty and I think, you know, the upgrades have been a, I think, a significant difference. And the cafeteria in particular, I think, you know, as I have said elsewhere, it's just nice to be serving food in a space that wasn't used by the men's basketball league the night before. So, and then I said, let that settle in. At Ambrose and McCall, we've got brand new roofs that are still undergoing the work. It will be wrapping up sometime within the fall. And then the high school gymnasium, which is just, if you haven't had a chance and you can get in the high school, you don't get in the way of the construction. And you curious, and you clear security, the high school gym floor is, it's just beautiful. And for those of you who may not have ever been in there, if you recall, it was a, it used to be a rubberized surface. It was just so worn. Became really dangerous. Kids were just slipping. And this is all hardwood. It's a, we will get fifty years out of this without question. Again, we'll get fifty years out of this.
The gym also said couldn't be done.
They said could not be done. We are gonna be a little bit later than we thought, but it's not as late as we thought it might be at one point. You can see in the bottom picture, brand new bleachers are going in. So it's just gonna be tremendous space and the reconfiguration is as significant as the actual flooring and bleachers. The fact that we have, have reconfigured the gym so that we're just gonna be able to have a lot more useful spaces for, for our kids and for the community. And then it goes without saying, last but not least, you're sitting in a brand new Lynch Elementary School. So I'm gonna have Andrew just quickly talk about elementary breakfast, because I think it's a good place to take it up.
Sure, thank you. Last year at Morocco, we piloted an expanded breakfast program. And so previously, breakfast in the schools was very small. It was just out of, we would fill our packets and you had to go to the nurse's office if you wanted to eat breakfast. And it's kind of one or two students that would kind of take us up on that every day. And so we sort of made a, invested in the program and now staffed by our food service provider, Woodsons. And it's also supervision through the school, so expanded sort of those certain positions that sort of covers that bus duty, now they cover cafeteria duty. And we saw an increase in Morocco last year, about forty to fifty students on average every day from that service. So we saw that it was successful and decided to launch it to all the elementary schools this year. And we're happy so far, most of the schools are averaging right now around thirty to forty students a day. Lynch in particular gets upwards of almost fifty so far, only a couple of days in. And the weather's been pretty good, so as the weather kind of comes more to England and winterish and stuff, those numbers definitely go up, so.
We bring out the old meal.
Yep, and there's a, some great, there's healthy options there, kids like, low sugar options.
Breakfast options, because I know the lunch calendar is sent out. What about the breakfast?
Yeah, so breakfast, it's more the kind of pre-made packets is muffins or like low sugar, reduced sugar cereals that are there. And then, and there's components defined by the federal government that we kind of speak to and it's more like you get fruit and juice and then there's milk as well. I'll borrow that packet. So the goal is that we have these packets to start. And then as you kind of have my consistency in those numbers, then see if we can bring more in-house and then make, you know, make fresh muffins or bagels or whatever it would be. Which will reduce the cost of those pre-made packages and then kind of, you know, and to make it a little better experience.
Less packaging.
Less packaging, yeah.
And the communication that came out with the principals was very clear that, you know, highlighted breakfast is now being offered. It's funny, my kids came out and they're like, the bus kids get breakfast, why are the only bus kids? And I'm like, actually, you could get breakfast and you could get to school early enough, right? So, thank you, great program.
Yeah, it's great. So those, the doors open seven forty-five across the elementary schools for that program, so.
And finally, I just want to just mention, we had, I think, a great opening, the first day being Tuesday after Labor Day, where it is building, more building base. And then we had our convocation on the second day. I kind of let off with a, just a welcome back. There were tears, there were laughter. It was pretty inspiring overall. I got huge reviews. I'm obviously just kidding, but I also wanted to recognize Doc Ellen, Emma and Lori Kirby. They spent so much time putting that together. That is no small feat for all of our staff in the high school. We had Dr. Lisa Decker, who just did a really nice job. She's worked with the district before. And it was just, you know, I, I thought it was really good kickoff and people were very engaged. We, we had breakfast for staff. We had some lunch options by the food service department and I think people took advantage of it. So I, it was a, in my view, and some of the feedback, early reviews, I think it was a good opening, so. That's, that's it.
Okay, next step back to you.
Back to me again today? Oh, next time, sorry. Sorry, I can't see. So I've got, there are two pairs of glasses. These are my computer. So that's how old I am. We, we've got some exciting news, but I also want to manage everyone's expectation. But as you know, we did submit a statement of interest to the MSBA, the state organization for school construction back in the spring for Morocco. And we received word a couple of weeks ago or so that the MSBA senior team will be coming out to visit the school next week, which is, which means that we are on some kind of list. That means we made it through the first round of evaluations of the statement of interest. It does not mean that there will be ground and earth moving equipment out in Morocco the following day. As if you all recall, the building we're sitting in was quite a long process. So, but it, you know, we can't, you can't win the lottery if you don't buy a ticket. We bought a ticket. We didn't hit the whole jackpot yet, but we, you know, we hit some numbers. So they come out, they essentially just kind of evaluate the, the school. They have a lot of questions. We have representation there from the town as well. They want to know of just certain conditions and, and, you know, what we're looking for. So it's, it's definitely good news and, you know, we're excited about it. But I also, you know, we won't know immediately, more than likely, if we are gonna get brought into the next round, which the next round would be where we're getting invited for eligibility and that is, that means we are in the pipeline. So we probably won't know that until after the December break, so yay.
Yeah, step forward.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Is this one for context, schedule of our statement of interest to the scheduled visit? Is that the usual amount of time? I feel like it's only three months, four months?
Well, that's usually the amount of time. Generally, you don't get, generally when you submit a statement of interest, you, you gotta do it a few times. You don't get in the first time. I think we submitted a very good statement of interest, one. Two, I think they, they know about Morocco because they've been out here before as they were looking at Lynch. And three, this community has supported projects. And I think that is very much who they like to partner with. They don't want to partner with communities that haven't had success because it's like, you know, it's a waste of time and money for them. So, I mean, I, and I also think they're getting through the list of elementary, of, of elementary schools now. I think there are fewer elementary schools left that are applying for projects. Boston, I was told, can't seem to get their act together, which is to everyone's interest for us. But, and they're building high schools, so, you know, you can build six elementary schools really for the cost of one high school now. So it gives them an opportunity to spread out the funding and, and give, give communities, you know, some, some, some support. So I'm not entirely surprised. I was anticipating that the list was getting shorter, so that's to our advantage. And we do good things with money, so.
Yeah.
We do, we do.
Making mistakes.
We did. They were so impressed when they came up with the ribbon cutting and they just kept talking about, we have never seen this many people at a ribbon cutting. Yeah, and that's quite a statement, because the statement was made by one of the gentlemen who has been on the MSBA since its inception, so, yeah.
Says a lot about a community.
Yeah, it certainly does. It certainly does.
And the need for a new one.
Yes.
To summarize it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great updating and very exciting stuff. So welcome back to everybody in the community. Excited to be here for the opening of Lynch and excited that we can host our meeting, our first meeting of the fall in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in this space. And just to be able to show it on WinCam and the Owl to the community, so very exciting days. I'm excited that the students and families have been able to come back to see all the hard work that's been happening over the summer with our staff, with professional development and especially in our facilities, as Dr. Hackett was showing through a picture, who a picture is worth a thousand words. It's been a busy summer for the school committee as well. We've been working on, talking a lot about our building assets and our vision for the district. And we'll see some of this tonight and then we will also be seeing this throughout the fall. One heads up is that the Town Meeting Members Association is working on additional communication avenues from boards and, boards and committees in town to town meeting members. This is called the Bulletin. They, and they've been reaching out to get some feedback on it, but basically it would entail like short updates from each board or committee that is working to town, to the Town Meeting Members Association about work that is being done on any articles in particular that you're bringing to town meeting in the fall or in the spring. We provide like a one hundred word update on what we're working on and then include a link to the information. So it's just another avenue to be able to get our information out there. And let's see, other than that, just looking forward to a strong year with all of our partners in the community and within the school department. And with that, I would also just like to welcome one of our school, our student council representatives from the high school, Ingo Lee. But thank you for coming. And his counterpart, Julia Boyd, will also be joining us, but later in the meeting. Ingo, if you have any thoughts or input from beginning of the school year, I hate to put you on the spot, but.
I think it's going well. I think the phone policy is really good too. The kids are like more engaged in classes and everything.
Oh, that's great to hear. That's good to hear.
You have no idea. The friend you just made.
Funny, I heard the same thing from your colleagues on the Coalition.
Yeah, it's great to hear. And we'd always love to hear your feedback and tell your friends. Please come during public comment and we'd love to hear from you. But anything, not just on the class.
And welcome. This is your first official, you were here when, when the transition was happening in the spring, but welcome to our meetings and look forward to having you participating.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. As we said in the opening remarks, we're gonna, we are going to table facilities rental policies for, and the manual for September twenty-fifth. And otherwise, we will take up the minutes from June twenty-fourth and policy DDA on the Special Education Stabilization Fund. Just a little bit of background on DDA. This had been, this policy had actually been updated a few years ago, I believe. And basically, originally, school committee, if we had unexpected special education expenses come in or costs come in, we had to seek approval from town meeting, but it has been updated whereby it's just an affirmative vote of both the school committee and the select board. So that was not reflected in our policy manual, so this is just touching our policy manual up to that.
I actually have a question. So there was a difference between the two funds, so we had a change at town meeting and what the funds were called. Did you account for that in, I didn't notice in the policy, you had accounted for that. The reason that, the reason the vote changed is because the fund changed. So originally, it had been one form of fund and then changed to a different fund.
I'm not sure what you mean, but you mean the source of the fund or the name of the account or?
The, the entire way it was managed, like it wasn't just the vote that changed.
Okay, I think existing policy doesn't speak to the way it's managed.
Yeah.
So the existing policy just talks about what it is and then just how, what the process is to get funding.
Yeah, I saw that.
So if you want to share some more information with me.
Okay.
Offline, I mean, if you want to table this, it's not, I, it's not critical that we get it done tonight, but we just want to make sure we're reflecting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're reflecting the right action, because the reason it changed is because if it's a stabilization fund, town meeting has been handled it, but it was re-categorized as a different fund.
Okay, all right.
I'm gonna have to move the minutes.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Oh, it's left on the agenda.
I'm happy to say that.
And all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. And the vote is unanimous for the minutes. Okay, next, we will move on to reports and the first item is our fall town meeting articles. My documents. So first, we'll be talking about the Mystic Building Transfer and this, he had actually taken up in our previous school committee meeting in late August. And school committee at that time, or the school committee had expressed interest surplusing the Mystic Building to the town. And then Mr. Marin had worked over the last several weeks to find quite a bit of information on how that, how that process might take place and had worked with our council and town council on that and had also reached out with the directors of Wind Rec and also of Kids Corner in the, in the building. So tonight, we have three parts that we have to take care of, including the transfer of property, the agreement and assumption of the lease, I'll just summarize that, and then also a town meeting article. So I will open that up for discussion or if there's further.
Well, let me, let me put the motion into the record. So the first motion that I, so I'll make all three of the motions and we can discuss them. But the first motion is I move to declare that the Mystic School is no longer needed for school purposes and that we provide notice of the same to the select board and a recommendation that the property be transferred to the care, custody, management and control of the select board for general municipal purposes.
Do you need seconds on this?
Second. Yes, we can discuss.
I thought you were.
I thought you were gonna read it.
I thought you were gonna read it. No, so, I mean, I think we should vote on them individually, so.
We can move through them.
So this needs a two-thirds majority pass at town meeting?
The article does. This is not the motion. So I, this is, this particular one, all it's doing is us indicating for the purposes that are required that we no longer intend to use this building as a school.
Okay.
For those who are watching or, you know, in the audience, this building is currently used by a combination of the Winchester Recreation Department as well as a private nonprofit which rents space and has not been used as a school building since, I'm sure Mr. Marin has the date, but I believe it is more than fifty years ago. And one of the things that's been complicated about the situation is that while the school department, the school committee holds care and control of the building, the current tenants include a department and enterprise of the town, so it's a very odd structure. And so I think it's the will of the committee based on prior meeting and discussion that we transfer the care and control of the building back to the town so that they can make decisions on, on how to move forward on that. So that's kind of this part of, is us just declaring that we no longer intend to use that property for school purposes.
Do we know that the town wants it back?
Or no care? We'll find out at fall town meeting.
Okay.
I mean.
Should we call Bill up?
Bill, I mean, we have a member of the select board.
This is not my meeting.
Madam Chow. I mean, does Bill have the authority to speak on behalf of the select board?
He can speak as a select board member.
Bill, do you want the building?
The issue of transferring the Mystic School from the schools to the town was discussed at the select board meeting this, just this past Monday. Only four of us were present for that conversation. We did not take an official vote, so I don't, I want to make sure, I want to make sure there's no misrepresentation here. But the four members who were present during that discussion all indicated that they thought this was a good idea and that they would be in favor, not only of the, the, the. and that they would be in favor, not only of the, the article, but would, I believe, likely co-sponsor it as well. So again, it can only speak to a general discussion that happened between four of us later in our evening. But you can take it as you will. Speaking for myself, I think this is a long time coming. I applaud your efforts for taking proaction on this. The Mystic School is a very interesting asset and liability in our books, and we've had a lot of work, a lot of discussion on it over the years, even in my short term as a select board member. So I really want to say thank you to all members of this committee for taking some, just very well thought out and definitive action on this issue. So thank you for that, and I hope that gives you a fair idea of what the select board was thinking when we discussed this the other night.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
And just, I think I mentioned this to the committee before, but looking at the VFA database, Mystic School had the second largest liability bill over the next five years.
So good luck. There was a twelve million dollars, that's according to the VFA database.
What we had called a fixer-upper.
Charming, it's charming.
From an energy perspective, it is also challenging.
Okay. With that, we have a motion on the table and a second? Or give me.
We had a second.
We had two seconds.
We had two seconds, so we'll let, we'll let our, our note taker figure this out. Hi.
And with that, the transfer of the property motion is unanimously approved.
So the second motion, I move to approve the assignment and assumption agreement between the town of Winchester, the school committee, and the Winchester After-School Program Incorporated, and assign the lease of the premises located at the Mystic School property, currently dated July twenty fifth, twenty eighteen, to the town subject to approval of the transfer of the property to the town by town meeting and authorize the school committee chair to execute the same.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the vote is unanimous on the assignment and assumption agreement. And then our third part.
Is the Fall Town Meeting Article. And so I would move that the school committee propose the following article for consideration in Fall Town Meeting, which is to see if the town will transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the Mystic School from the school committee to the select board for general municipal purposes and take any other action in relation thereto. And to allow the committee via the chair to instruct Mr. Marin on behalf of the school department to send the proposed town meeting article to the select board for review and ask for their support and cosponsorship.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the vote is unanimous on the Fall Town Meeting Article. And Mr. Marin, if would you please work with Liz or Ford to communicate this.
And I just would add that town management, town, the people in town, in town hall have been super helpful, helping us walk through this, obviously, this, this language was, is not our language. This is language from the town council, and it's been, I think, I do think that in general, town hall is excited about having this under their control with all kinds of good reasons for that, so.
Doing what we have.
Yes.
You're a good partner. Next up, we have a demographic study that we have been considering. Dr. Hackett had brought that, had brought that to our policy subcommittee meeting, and then it had come forward at our last meeting for a discussion of a professional GIS study of our district founders. And Mr. Marin and Dr. Hackett have been looking into that.
And as you've heard in public comment. Late breaking news, and we're very, we're excited to hear that. Like, I think it's a great opportunity to partner on something. So this demographic study, just to be clear, what we, what we are looking for is we are looking to know, we're looking to have someone come in and look at the general districting of our community, of our schools, right? Every school has a particular zone in our district that it serves. The neighborhood schools, obviously, the middle school and the high school serves all of the zones. Give us an idea where students are, obviously, we know where they're currently located, but they would be then going in and looking to see what the birth data looks like, what the, what the demographics look like to help also predict what it's going to look like in the future, which I think is really super important for us. We have talked about this before at the table here, you have as a committee. And what we have kind of laid it on a while ago was let's get Lynch open, and let's see what kind of impact we might feel from that. It has been the experience for me anywhere, I've opened a new building, and for Winchester that when you build it, they will come. So it just will be interesting to see how that looks over the course of, of this year. And then I think this is perfect timing with the master facilities plan for us to be able to get these data as we try to inform decisions moving forward about how we're zoned, how we're districted, what, and what the future holds around that, and also in relation to the capacity of our buildings. Also perfect timing, given the fact that, as I said earlier, the MSB is coming out to Rocco next week, and this will only help us, and we will talk about this, this will only help us with them because they have always, I think, appreciated the level of preparedness that Winchester has brought to the table in this process. So, so I think it's great information. We, you know, it, it's kind of one of those things where you can kind of pay what you want. There's a menu of options. So at this point, we'll continue to, we'll kind of look more into, have more conversation around what it might mean to partner and not asking for you to take action this evening. I do think, and I know no one's gonna hear this, but I do think we, the committee needs to consider just a brief, maybe Zoom meeting next week to nail down some of these articles, because we do have to have them in by the nineteen, like, you know.
Right, right, right. And can I say, I just, if it's, I don't want to interrupt you, Dr. Hackett.
No, I'm, I'm good.
So I, you know, thank you to Dr. Vinalia for coming tonight. It was sort of at our State of the Town meeting on Friday. We just sort of had this very happy occurrence where I think the synergy started to come together around this, this issue. My understanding is that the town already has software potentially, but maybe not necessarily the capacity in the other departments that might have benefit from that software to actually use it for the purposes that they are hoping. And so I think one of the great things about the State of the Town process so far has been sort of bringing together some of these disparate silos which have existed in the past and allowed us the opportunity to say, hey, actually, we're kind of thinking about doing something with that as well. And so I think hopefully what we can do through this, if we're able to get it all to the finish line by, by September nineteenth, is show that town departments can work together and partner to use money in efficient and effective ways to, to benefit more than one department at once. So I'm really excited about that. Also, I wanted to speak to the fact that, you know, sort of during the State of the Town process, we've actually had a number of conversations about sort of the asset base that the school department currently holds. Obviously, we've taken a very decisive action tonight around the Mystic Building, which is not used for school purposes at this time. Obviously, now with the Lynch School having been opened, we also have another building, Parkers, which has most recently been used as the place to house students from Lynch while the construction on this property is taking place. And so I think this is another opportunity for us by school committee policy. If we're considering doing anything with that and sort of thinking about its next steps, we do have to study it by school committee policy. And so I think this is another way, as we sort of get to know more about where our students are in town, this is another vehicle through which we can consider better the use of that building as well, because it's an opportunity to look into that. So more to come, and Dr. Hackett, I think we, I, I hope that everyone in the committee can get behind the fact that, you know, we, we do need to meet one more time, because this is a hard deadline for, for when the warrant, Fall Warrant closes next Friday.
Can I ask about, on this, I'm just curious, I'm, I'm supportive, generally, I think we need the, the greater insight and data for all the reasons that you mentioned. I, I heard a lot, though, about GIS versus what I thought was a researcher, professional services consulting kind of thing. How, are we looking at information systems here that we're investing in or looking at hiring a research firm or we're still figuring that out?
I think that what the initial, so we've done some initial looking into it, and my understanding is that at least, and I, I could be wrong on this, we're still working to verify it, but at least initially the feedback we got, and I'm looking at Dr. Vinalia, because we sort of have had this conversation, is that the town, the engineering department may already have purchased the actual resource, the software, right? The challenge that we currently face is that neither the planning department nor the school department actually have the expertise to use that resource that already exists. And maybe, I mean, the engineering department may not, because my understanding is the now former town manager was the one who largely had used it in the past. So it's, I, I think it's a consulting thing at this point to actually understand how we can use the resource the town already has. It may be necessary to expand it, but I think we're gonna have to scope that in the next few days. But basically, the, I think the largest part of, of what we're going to need is consulting to help the departments understand how to put that into use for, for their particular purposes.
And to also, just to tag on to that, so the demographic study itself is, there are companies that come in and do this work, right? So there have been several that have been done over the last several years. There's one firm in particular that's done several of these locally. They, they take advantage of the access, the GIS system. So what's key for that us in this study is that the GIS system is, you know, is set up usable and ready to go. Otherwise, they would have to find an alternative way to do the study itself, which would add on to the cost of the study. So it's, it's connected generically to what we're asking for in terms of the demographic study.
Great. I'll look forward to hearing more next week.
Yeah, and I think I, I, just to sort of say, I think it's great to be able to, obviously, not always rely on a full consulting engagement, to sort of have some in-house expertise to use these tools moving forward, because, again, I'm not Mr. Marin, but I can imagine, based on our experience with Mr. Marin's leadership in his department, that having someone who understands how to use the tool the town already has might actually benefit us, not just in this particular instance, but down the line as well.
Yeah, so we keep on refreshing the study and get more of the tool.
And if there's a synergy among different.
Departments.
Committees and departments and, or, and, and groups, then I think that is very helpful.
Yeah, and I'm definitely supportive of, of having the talent in-house. I think there's a great efficiency. I was wondering how much of this is information systems versus humans, whether they're external consultants or internal staff.
So, so far, we've been told the information systems piece is handled, so we'll just have to verify that. We're crossing, there's lots of.
So next week you'll come back with the cost?
Yeah, we'll come up with an estimate, yeah. I'm not sure.
Description.
What do we have to have for Fall Town anymore? Do we have to have like a placeholder number or we have the actual number? Yes, we will.
Does not exceed, you know, and we can word it the way that's appropriate.
Yeah, you can, as long as it does not exceed, the number can't be a placeholder for the warrant.
Correct.
The background information can be.
A placeholder.
Right.
But I think we have to come up with a does not exceed number.
Right.
And if our friends on the planning board want to co-sponsor, would they be able to do that after the nineteenth?
No, they'll have to take action.
They'll have to do it before the nineteenth.
Correct.
They can do a vote of support after the nineteenth, so we, we could sponsor it, and if they couldn't do it in time, they could always take an affirmative vote, which is the effect of co-sponsorship.
We'd invite them to speak on it.
They need.
If they made, they actually made it Tuesday.
Yes, correct. I, we have not gotten that far. This literally happened on Friday, and it's now Thursday of the following week, so it's.
And again, I'm. Worried too much about the, the official co-sponsorship, as long as we have the interest of the planning board and the select board and what we're doing moving forward, and they both speak affirmatively on it at town meeting. It would be lovely to have it, but I don't think it's effectively a major difference for us.
I'm, I'm more interested in the background anyway to understand.
Exactly.
The what.
And that we've got more time.
I personally always love these two weeks before town meeting warrant closes, because it feels like this frenetic rush to get everything done and, or it's trying to get meetings and get things approved, so.
Okay, with that, we'll just move on to consideration of approval of the student acceptable use of technology policy, IJNDV. This had come to policy subcommittee back in August, mid-August. And Dr. Ellen Emma, would you like to speak to this, as I know that you've been working on this with your staff?
Sure. Yes, so we have been working over, you know, this is something we should regularly update, so we've been working to get feedback from different roles in the district about what makes sense, what's changing technology, and of course, working with MASC guidance. So we have first the student one that we're looking to move forward, as that's, you know, more time sensitive at the beginning of this year. And there is some overlap, so both in this student one, you will see some talk about the staff pieces, because it's very important to us that parents and students are also aware of what the staff expectations are around things. And then, once this is approved, we'll work on the staff one to make sure everything's in alignment, and then you will also see some overlap in the staff one as well as about the students, so that they understand what the expectations are for the students as well. So we're, there is the biggest question that comes up, there's a lot of discussion around AI that we've had around it, and MASC is recommending at this point that districts don't set policies around AI. We are working on district guidelines, and we have a large diverse committee working on that, which is fantastic. And we've put out some things already that are just clear, like things we shouldn't be doing with AI. But there will be, and there's tools and references and, and what can be used and what can't be used and how it can be used, but there will be a lot more depth to those guidelines. So we're also happy to share those when those are done, even though it's not an official policy. And we will continue to look to both legal and MASC's guidance around that. So if anyone has any questions, happy to answer. We have a nice discussion in policy subs, so happy to fill anyone in on anything.
I'd just like to reaffirm what you said about MASC, Ms. Bolanese and I were at the MASC conference last year, where, as you can imagine, this was a hot topic.
I can imagine.
And both the, the legal representation that they had there and other districts speaking from their own experiences, and we're finding that the guidelines were actually far more useful than having policy, because policy can be clunkier and harder to change quickly, whereas guidelines can be more flexible and can apply to what's happening, and the issues around AI, as I'm sure Mr. Hopcraft can go into, they change so rapidly that there's just no way to create a policy, is, was the messaging that we were hearing, that, I'm not sure if you talked about this as policy sub too, but to, to keep up nearly as fast as, as the technology.
And we were lucky, we had, Riffy was a great support to us, and we brought in a professor from Harvard, who was very helpful to us with some of that, and he luckily lives locally and has agreed to do more support with us as we go through the guidelines and as things emerge. So that's been fantastic.
Are there any specific changes that were made, the policy, that are going to be highlighted or?
We could, if we would like us to go back and redline, yes, there's quite a few updates, because it's a while since we've done it. So we can go back and do, it, it's not a, like, unlike other policies where you might just change a phrase or a sentence, your headline and replace, it's much, this is like whole chunks and whole pieces, but we can put it side by side with the old policy if that would be helpful.
It would be really hard to do. I just want to say.
Oh, no, so admittedly, I read it with fresh eyes, because this is my first time reading it. But if I was like a parent of a junior.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe I'm not looking, this is not on my radar.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So maybe should we send a blast out saying, our tech policy has updated?
Yes. We did.
Okay.
You please sit out. In anticipation of yourself, all right.
Just like, wait, I'm not gonna read this cover and discover it every year.
And because we do expect people to, right, be able to have the things and sign off on it.
The blast now would be, you didn't approve it, and we're gonna send out the old policy.
Yes.
So, because we just had to meet the timeline to get them to sign off.
And just to give a little bit of perspective, the old policy, I believe, was adopted or based on a policy from Burlington and was, were set up in two, twenty twelve.
It says twenty fifteen at the bottom of this.
Yeah, and then it was, and the school committee came back and, and updated it in twenty fifteen, but it was still the same as the twenty twelve policy. So it was very old, the references to the kinds of technology were very old, the definitions were old. And I think with this policy or with this update, it just updated, like, talking about Google Workspace and, and like the kinds of technology that we do use in classes at this point, rather than some of the things that were, we just don't even use anymore.
Right.
Which we had all the flip phones.
And we had, so, I mean, just, just to like, you know, sort of, I, I think it's important to say this, we already did have a policy subcommittee meeting where we did dive into the changes. And so those have been reviewed. Dr. Ellen Emma walked us all through that. And so those have been reviewed, Dr. Ellen Emma walked us all through that, we discussed and had some questions in that.
Channel our parents didn't log into that.
No, I totally agree, I think the communication piece is important, and.
You're underestimating.
Yeah.
The cast of thousands that were.
But. The only thing that I will note is in the final draft that we received. It is actually titled the Student Acceptance Use Policy. So if, unless there's other discussion, I would like to make a motion, but I wanna just make sure that we address that in the motion.
I don't think you even need to address it in the motion, it's a typo. I'm okay with you going forward with the motion.
With typo corrected, yes. So I, I, unless there's other, you know, discussion, I would be happy to move that we adopt. The revised policy I J N D P. For student B, 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 sorry, I said B, but it sort of sounded like a P. I J N D B, it's for student acceptable use. As presented with the typo corrected.
On paper?
Aye.
Aye. And, um. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll be back before long with the staff piece.
I apologize earlier for my, um, my stumble as I transitioned from work to here, but. The specialized policy should be for the, for a reserve fund, not for a stabilization fund. In twenty eighteen, we moved from a stabilization fund to a reserve fund. And so the stabilization fund required.
It's funny that you mention that, because all in my head, I've been saying reserve.
That's why the stabilization.
And then when I came back and looked at this, I was like, oh, maybe I've had it wrong all along, because it says stabilization.
Yeah, I found my memo from twenty three, I've added to the committee, so. It, it actually, we transitioned in twenty eighteen from a special education reserve fund to. From a stabilization fund to a reserve.
And that's why.
And in doing so, a stabilization fund does require a vote of town meeting, so we can't have a policy that says. It requires a vote of the select board and the school committee, we need to change the whole policy. We need, we could vote tonight to eliminate that policy, and then to write a new one.
Could we?
Not vote to, I'm sorry.
I, no, I was going to just offer the alternative, so there are only two places in the document that we have tonight. Where the word stabilization is used. Would it be acceptable to replace, make a motion to replace that? With the word reserve and adopt the policy otherwise as presented?
Because I believe it was adopted years ago, we're catching up the manual to what we had adopted.
Right, right. I just, I don't know, I leave that up to the policy subcommittee, but I don't know if you wanna, like, I don't know if you'd wanna go back and reletter that, and. Cause it's two completely different funds, so we may wanna keep a stabilization fund policy in our manual. In case we ever wanted to establish a stabilization fund and a reserve fund, we could potentially have vote.
Why don't we bring it back?
Okay, we'll bring it back then.
All right, and let's see. All right, so moving right along, we have next the review of the W P S twenty thirty five-year operational needs, a working draft.
A working draft. So we're working just as fast as we can. The, obviously, this was work that we were, we are, had been doing, uh, were, we were going to do. But we are falling under a little bit of a different timeline with the state of the town, uh, work that's happening, so. We're gonna, um, we're trying to provide some ideas about. The question of, of, if, if there were going to be an override, what would the school number be, so. I wanna be super clear that this is. This is in addition to whatever it would cost us to roll over our budget. So, um, and I believe the modeling that's happening is carrying five percent for us, Mr. Matthews, uh, just roll over. And whether that number is right or not, it's just the model, right, so. So what we've, what we've worked off of is, uh, you, this should look relatively familiar to you. Um, and you recall that in the F Y twenty six budget year, which is the year that we're in. We were able to do, get down through this, uh, list quite a ways. Thanks to impart the town meeting funded article, which helped us to fund some of the literacy initiatives. That's great news, however, we're still gonna need that money and more, so. Now we need to, and you'll see below, roll that money into the F Y twenty seven proposal. And we've got some estimates on, rough estimates on what we think that looks like, so. The literacy pilot is off and running, we will come back to likely in October-ish, maybe, I can't remember, we did talk about a date. To get an update from the literacy coordinator, um, and Ms. Kirby on how the, um, what we're doing with the piloting and just give you some sense of. Of what that looks like. We have also done a lot of literacy professional development with these funds. And we have a couple of applications that we purchased with those, with those funds as well, those funds being specifically the, the funds that were in the article. We did, um, in the operating budget, so money that we are currently carrying. We implemented, um, the phase one of our McCall schedule. Restructuring, and we will, Dr. Ellen Emma, at some point in the near future, with Mr. Lynn, will. Come and talk a little bit about what that looks like and what we're seeing. And it really involves rotating the schedule, much like the high school does, uh, but. I think the, the committee that, uh, Dr. Ellen Emma ran with Mr. Lynn did a, just a. Great job, so what we kind of landed on for this year is a partial rotation. The goal would be a full rotation, um, and as you recall, we had to. The sharing of staff among the elementary schools was really what was constraining the schedule for the, for this period. Those funds have helped us to get that partial rotation in place. Um, and then the mathematics, elementary math specialists, two and a half at each building.
Two and a half total for the district.
Two and a half for the district and point five at each building.
That'd be nice if you would just, I would support two and a half in each building.
So move. So, just, again, just a little bit of a trip down memory lane, so then if we, as we scroll down, um, we really try to. Build out F Y twenty seven was kind of the primary focus, because. Clearly, year one of any operational override is probably the most important year, because those things that we really. Feel strongly about, that we value, that we really need, um, we would want to be able to. Implement within year one, to the extent that we can do it, and I mean that from the standpoint of capacity, uh, and also to the extent that it makes sense, so. There's a lot of assumptions in here, uh, the first one being the line one, we would, uh, in F Y twenty seven. We will have selected a literacy program through the pilot, uh, that timeline is, uh, we're, we're hoping. Will, it will have to line up with the budget process. And we feel pretty confident that we'll have a very good idea about how we get to the budget timeline around, uh, February, March-ish. That we will have a selection. We're, I'm, we're carrying eight hundred thousand dollars, that is truly just a, a, a complete estimate, we have a couple of different programs. They range in costs and, um, like everything else, they range in options. So, um, that right now is just, that's a placeholder number. We had also in F Y twenty six, we had talked about some, uh, just some literacy specialists. We are carrying right now two point O, and we're calling them district-wide literacy specialists. Because I think there is, there is some interest among us in, um, the committee. Around trying to address literacy issues, potentially the middle school, uh, in support, um, it could be at the. Elementary, um, and it could be nowhere, so, uh, again, it's a placeholder number, we just have to work through this process of. The pilot and what the needs are, and, um, where we're gonna, we're gonna land. Then we'll be have to carry, as I said before. The M-class literacy application, the district, the district M T S S, the multi-tier support system. Software, those are being paid for currently out of the funding from, uh, the town, we'll have to move that into the operating budget. We would then also go to phase two on the math, elementary mathematics specialist to round us out at one per school. And you can see the kind of the costs associated. We are looking to do mathematics pilots, so there's, uh, really already some piloting, really loose piloting going on right now, and, and. Ms. Kirby's working, uh, with our, um, our mathematics coordinator. To explore a few things, so I think. We're gonna be in a very good position to be able to enter a full pilot next year, um, if. We won't be starting from scratch, is really my point.
Can I ask a question there?
Yes.
Thank you for allowing me to interrupt you, but what programs? And are we piloting them anywhere? It's just being discussed.
We're just looking at different resources, and right, we're just bringing in those resources that people have been using, it was more in. The very, very soft. Yeah, and again, we're just thinking about the capacity of teachers as we're heading into this literacy pilot as well.
Right.
Kind of manning for that all.
So positioning ourselves for F Y twenty seven. I'm sorry, the committee's falling apart.
What's your question?
Don't let it distract you, Ms. Kirby. Um, so thank you, so we're thinking next year we'll roll out a similar pilot model that we're doing with literacy, that's the hope. At least, or we're gonna wait and see to see how literacy is going, what that process looks like, make any improvements.
Correct, so I, I, honestly, I, I mean, just, as, as we're rolling out this, it's, it's, it's a lot of work, as we all know. So it's really what can educators take on next year, so if we're taking on the literacy and then to think, oh, they're gonna be learning a whole new math program. So this, what we're doing is we're taking the opportunity to use this year and next year to look up the different programs that are out there. And right now, there is a great interest in, you know, I'm called the Luster of Math. It had been in the district, people had heard about it.
Sorry, what is it called again?
A Luster of Math. And so, um, there are good number of people that are using it, it's pretty much split between everyday math and the Luster of Math. So next year it might be that with, we're, I mean, looking at other districts, the math coordinator's talking with other districts. When he's setting up committees, so what we're doing is really positioning ourselves, like Brian said. To either next year, but more likely the following year, to really dive into it. But it would be a much faster process, only because we're doing.
Literacy paved the way.
Reviewing in these two years, so that, that following year could really be a launch of adoption, if we do it well.
For many conversations, just wanted to know what.
A lot.
We're looking at here and what we're doing.
Absolutely, we, we can provide a more, a, a more complete update later on, um, also, I hope you wanna speak to the universal screener.
Yeah, so we just, uh, last year, we were looking at different, um, screeners, that assessment common across the board. Just so that, again, just another tool that teachers can use to inform their instruction on the, right in this moment.
For mathematics?
For mathematics, and this is really where we're using our math specialist right now. So this is the data that we're going to be taking a look at, and that will determine, are we in the primary grades, are we in. Intermediate, elementary, and then it may look different at different buildings because of the students, so we're definitely following. The need of the students, and while we're doing this, it gives us an opportunity to really think about. What data we have, what data we need, and just how we're looking at it, and what we're doing with it. So to have these specialists already, it's making a difference, because. It is allowing a little breathing space, because they're behind the scenes doing all the setup. For the work that needs to be done to gather the data, look at the data, and let's, you know, plan what our best next steps are. So a lot of great things happening.
Actually, a question for Laurie and Dr. Hackett. A lot of the new programming and the new, um, the new assessment tools are all online tech. Resources that come with subscription plans to have the. Packages that you need to really assess and, um, be able to track student information over time. Are these costs that we, are, are they including those ongoing costs?
Just a placeholder, but we would, yeah, and it would have to, right, include those costs. And I, you know, just to pick up on the other point, Ms. Kirby, I mean, I mean, we, we have, we have people using one of the programs we're looking at right now. So it's hard to know, um, the timeline on, you know, I mean, we'll, I think we'll be, we could be in a better place than in terms of what we do. But also very conscious of the fact that we got a full literacy implementation, but to your point. Almost everything we do now is year-over-year license cost, so, um, yeah, uh, we, that's really a place to remember at this point.
Okay, like, even for the literacy, the materials are supplies, the student material, it's not just a one-time. Purchase anymore.
No.
That purchase, like, and that's once, and then it's continuously ongoing.
Correct.
Sometimes it are.
Yeah, that's a, a very important point, so when you kind of get down to the bottom and you see that two million dollar number. That number is gonna carry over year over year. So, um, cause everything that's in here is a year-over-year cost, or it's a permanent cost, it's not one-time funding, uh, for the most part.
Just, really, one last thing, so we're entering the school year, right now, our elementary programming is mostly everyday math and San Francisco math, correct?
No, the history.
Oh.
And, but, that is another resource that we're using, because that's the inquiry base, but it's really not a program. So these are just different, um, units that can be used that really enhance. And support our end goal of giving students that exploration, discovery time.
But we'll provide a more complete.
For the community, the future.
Beginning of the years.
No, it's good stuff, it's exciting.
Talk about it.
Open houses are coming up.
I just don't want them asking me questions that I'm prepared to answer.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here for it.
Alright, so settle down.
Alright.
Alright, um. So then phase two with the McCall schedule, again, it's a placeholder, uh, we'll know more, and, um, you know, if we go through phase one and it doesn't go well, then. Might not be a phase two, uh, or the phase two could look different, so we're, that is a placeholder number right now, as these all are, but I wanna continue to say it. Six through twelve mathematics support, again, a placeholder, um, along the line of, you know, are there some things that we can do to support math? Um, at the six through twelve level. And that could range from personnel to materials. Expansion of, uh, high school, general classroom expansion of, and expansion of electives at the high school, so. Uh, we're really focused with this, would be focused on science, computer science. Uh, uh, electives and also general classroom, um, supports. We, we kind of run into a situation now where we have, we're, we're trying, we need to reduce the number of kids in our study halls, right, and we need to provide. Uh, electives that are important to them, and programming is important to them, we really don't have. A lot in the way of, um, computer-related or technology-related curriculum currently, that's, you know, based. Within the school that is accessible to all kids. So to not go into more detail than that, but that's the conceptual focus of this. That would be, uh, one F T E, um, over the next three years, so, uh, one in twenty seven, one in twenty eight, and one in twenty nine. Again, placeholders, um, elective expansion to focus on art and music, we, um, we often. We always have more kids who want those electives than we can fill with, because we don't have enough staff, we don't have the space to provide it plus you. And so we want to begin to also build that out, uh, because the result of that is that kids. Don't get where they, what the, of course, what they want, they could end up in a study hall, um, but it's also. You know, it's a, it's a need, we have kids who are extremely talented in art and music, um, and we think it's really important for us to. Make sure we're building that, those programs out and supporting those programs along with, um, core academic programs as well. Just like professional development, this was on the list for last year, so, you know, this is professional development K through twelve, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's a placeholder number. That's not anything, that's not literacy, anything specifically, but, uh, as we, as we continue, as we, if, with the feedback that, um. We wanna be bringing in outside consultants, um, I can just tell you that, um, that's not cheap, so, uh, we, uh. Dr. Decker was really an unbelievable deal in comparison to some of. The other options that were out there for us that were ranging to, um, like thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars for a day. So, um, we, you know, if we're gonna commit to that, then we gotta have the funding to do it, uh, obviously, and I know this committee. Supports, um, that notion.
And it's, I'll say it's important because of the feedback that we got as a result of what happened during the literacy. Process. That was probably one of the clearest messages we got from our, you know, faculty stakeholders was. That one of the challenges that we've had consistently over time is the lack of outside perspectives, it's no shade or. Negative feedback to those who were doing it, but it was a lack of resources that. Meant we weren't able to do more outside consultants coming in. And I feel like, based on the feedback that we got and the great reporting that's been delivered, um, from our, our team. That that was one of the highest priorities that, that our educators had, um, just to make sure that we continue to. Offer a process of development and improvement for, for them, so that they deliver better educational experiences year after year for our students.
And certainly supported, um, by all of us, you know, and, and you made the point, Dr. Matthews, and it's an important one, I mean, the district. Didn't have the funding, we haven't had the funding, and, um, you know, kind of had to go more of a whole-grown model, and, you know, train the trainer and bring our own. And we have a lot of great expertise in-house, so I think that, you know, which is to find that nice mix of that plus the outside help. But, yeah, to the, we, we can't do it if we don't have the money, so.
Anyone's looking for a side gig, though, lots of people want ten thousand dollars an hour.
Anyone's looking for a side gig though. Lots of people want ten thousand dollars an hour, so it's
I gotta tell you, I did
And Dr. Ellen, that's the other point I was gonna make though, is that when we budget for this amount, it's, again, it's not a one and done. It's like, we can bring in Dr. Decker and she comes in once, but it's really the opportunity to have people like that, um, come in and work with the staff over time. Um, you come in, have somebody introduce the literacy idea and then goes away, and while the teachers work with it, the idea might go with them. Unless they can come back and, um, work with the staff throughout the school year as the kids experience what they have just, the teachers have just learned about.
In the specialized areas, people who are often smaller groups of teachers want expertise coming in too, which is a reasonable request, but again, even a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, divide that by ten thousand, you'll know how many hours we have for everybody for the whole district, right?
Right.
And so it's very cost prohibitive.
I'll also say, you know, sort of as part of the state of town process, one of the things we've done is sort of listen to the experiences of other districts, um, and, you know, the creative ways from a budgeting standpoint, um, other districts have used to try to get, because professional, I think a lot of people just don't understand that professional development is, is essential, right? Like continuing to offer opportunities for educators to develop their skills to evolve with changing things that are going on in curriculum, you know, sort of as curriculum changes or evolves over time, making sure they're up to date on the evolutions in the curriculum. You know, sort of allowing them to develop their skills as educators and sort of engage children in a classroom setting. Um, you know, one of the things that, that struck me was that I heard from other districts that, you know, in some cases, they've selected curricula specifically because it came with embedded professional development over time, like Ms. Bergstrom said. Um, and what I found interesting about that is in some cases, they were like, well, it necessarily wasn't our top choice, but then we realized that it came with this, you know, the package when you buy the Netflix software as a service model, you also get embedded professional development, and that was an easier thing to sort of talk about. You know, we have gone through a very good long process to figure out which curricula, in terms of literacy, work best for the educators in our district. Not necessarily ones that have embedded professional development, so we are gonna have to make sure that we have a budget appropriation to, to fund on an ongoing basis.
And fund the time and space for the teachers to access.
Correct.
And just to add, there's a lot of things too that aren't tied to a specific curricula, like latest pain research, the latest things about how you deal with different disabilities or how we deal with multiple or whatever, none of those are a curriculum base that would come embedded in anything, so they're standalone costs.
But if you don't have, you can't deliver the curriculum.
Correct.
So I, I just wanted to highlight that because I think it's something that we don't talk about enough.
Yeah.
Is sort of the things that over time this district has just not had funding for, but are essential in terms of delivering good educational outcomes for our students, so.
Okay, thank you.
And I've, I will also say I have a tremendous amount of empathy, having delivered in-house PD myself and been responsible for the creation of that. And, um, it is very humbling when you do that to receive the evaluations at the end of it because for all of the effort and work that you put into it, you often get really negative evaluations at the end, and that's why outside professionals who really, this is what they do.
Right.
Um, it's, you know, a major positive experience for the educators when it's somebody who's experienced. That's their career, that's what they do, as opposed to those of us who have multiple hats and roles, we have to navigate, so.
And I will say, we did get very good survey feedback from since you brought it up, uh, across the board, um, so
This year.
On this year's opening, so, and I also should say, and, um, credit to Dr. Ellen and, um, uh, Lori Kirby, you know, we've had that professional development committee in, in the contract for many years, and, um, I think we've done a, we've worked hard with, uh, union leadership to really make sure we've got some representation and that that maybe takes on a life and really means something. They picked a theme for this year, which is Brainless to Learn, so that was a big part of our opening. So, um, they've done a good job just kind of setting the table, um, and will continue to do the work over the course of this year and, um, but it's really nice to have a theme and it kind of ties things together. It ties in well nicely with, uh, WPS twenty thirty.
Yeah.
All of that. Um, so I, I'm not gonna, you know, one, I would like to say, when I said earlier, they may be a short meeting next week. I, I also will just say depending on what the need is, is of the state of the town, um, and I believe that is also the nineteenth, that they're looking on Friday to have some kind of bigger picture of what are these budget needs. We probably ought to have, I think we're in a place where we need administrative leadership, we need you to weigh in on this stuff one more time. So I think it would be good if we could find some time, and it could be Zoom, it doesn't have to be in person, um, along with whatever we need to clean up for the articles, but to, to spend time on this and have discussions and just we all know that this is a draft, this is, you know, our best thinking, our best and current thinking. Uh, but I also know, I mean, I'm nervous even putting these numbers out here right now, right? Because as soon as you put a number out, that's whatever it kind of latches on to. Um, so cannot emphasize the fact this is a draft. That's true, but if we go over, it's a problem. Um, so I would just, I just want to throw that out there, and again, I, you know, I don't wanna walk, I don't want to spend a lot of time walking through this whole thing, but just to finish out FY twenty seven, because that's really where we tried to focus, understanding that's really, you know, that's year one and probably the most important year. Uh, theater program, six to twelve review, that was also a, um, a priority that we had that we did not fund, um, in FY twenty six. Uh, this is a combined, um, need. So we did have adaptive physical education, uh, on the list, and, um, we are quickly realizing that we, we're quick, quickly realizing that we really do need leadership around health and PE, like a director level position. But the thinking, which is super creative, I think, um, is to combine that position with adaptive PE, so
For K to twelve.
For K to twelve, right. So, um, that's what this position re- represents, um, and, you know, it, it is needed, and I, you, you, as Dr. Ellen just said, you know, we have these smaller specialty groups who need support in, uh, professional development, quality professional development. Um, and this is one area that we don't have any kind of coordinator, coordinator or director leadership in. Um, that I, you know, we see that as a priority, and I think making, combining it with expanding our special education services just is good, uh, makes a lot of sense. Special education sensory support materials, district transportation for field trips, this would, um, this is a phased-in, um, uh, implementation at fifty thou, at ten thousand dollars per elementary school, so fifty thousand dollars in year one, um, and then classroom instructional materials, uh, which are sorely needed, um, and that just increases the budgeted allocation for teachers. This would be money that would really go directly to, to teachers for their instructional materials. Um, and that's also a phase in implementation over the next few years. So, Andrew, just kind of, uh, just quickly, uh, go through twenty eight. You can, you know, not to go through these one by one, but to give you some sense of, um, what this looks like, kinds of things we're talking about. Um, social emotional coaches, um, theater program, really starting to build that out based on the review that, the information we get from the review. Uh, and, you know, the further we get out, the, the, you know, the more this is, um, this kind of projecting. So if the committee, um, and not to do it tonight, but I, I think if the committee could coordinate offline to find time that, um, everyone can, um, be, be at next week to, to do some things that would be, I think, super helpful.
We can take care of that.
Yeah.
And are you looking, um, I guess beyond discussion, are you looking at pri- or prioritizing things, or are we bringing a recommendation on?
So we'll continue to work on it internally, um, when we, when you have your meeting next time, we will, uh, these are loosely prioritized, but we have, I'm certainly not gonna say they represent everyone's view because they don't currently. So we'll, we'll focus on really trying to, um, you know, refine this and then, um, also inclu- inclusive of, of, uh, prioritizing uh, internally for your workshop or meeting next week. Should feel pretty really good, honestly, about what we've been able to implement this year.
Yeah.
I mean, the support of town meeting, the support of the select boards, um, to, um, really, you know, it was not an insignificant number that we brought. And, um, the town really stepped up. Um, I think we made a very compelling case for it, um, and a lot of support from parents in the community, and, um, I think we're making very good use of the money that we've been given, and it's, uh, it's created some, generated some excitement, I think, for for us, and, um, you know, we're really excited about the potential to be able to, can not only just continue that momentum, but to build on it, um, and get our programming, kind of supports up to where we think they should be, imagining the talent of our staff. Uh, we do amazing things with staff for not a lot of money, uh, generally, so no one wants to talk about the per pupil cost, but uh, it is, it is, it's a measure, it means something, um, and that's not the driver. The driver is the programming and us really trying to think clearly, um, thoughtfully about what is it that we really feel that we need, and the core feedback we got on top of professional development ahead of that with staffing and support for teachers with current, what we currently do, um, to really fully support what we currently do, so. That's it for me.
I just have two quick questions before I move on, if that's okay. Mrs. Purvey, is there communication that going, that's going to go out about the literacy pilot, what classrooms are involved? That would be, that'd be great. I've been waiting to let my teachers settle in before I start asking, like, I'm playing a pilot pilot.
Thank you. I'm reminding people with four days, that's all. I know, people are failing. Um, but yes, you read them, we, we, we heard you, and yesterday the elementary leadership team met, and we, uh, crafted a letter, we're going to be sending that out to all families. And then within each of the pilots, there are family letters, and we want to test those. Are they good? Are they meaningful to families? So some families have already received them, and others will be getting them as their units and modules are, you know, completed. So it's an overview of, this is what's happening for the piloteers, but be assured that all educators are being seen and that our goal, those are tools, we've got to continue to provide that rich ongoing, meaningful professional development to build their understanding and even their, um, knowledge of why we're headed in the, this direction, so that when we get these tools, we can really make them come to life for the kids that we have for us. So that is our goal.
Well, I'm a pilot classroom.
If you're not, it's going to be proud of you, okay?
Um, or just another question regarding our, our priorities. Um, I know this is something that we talked about, um, over the summer, but, um, one of the survey results where our students, our parents, our teachers are asking for more advanced programming for our students.
Yeah.
Um, so more AP classes, more honors classes, um, is that going to be included?
I mean, I think we didn't talk specifically about what it would be, but
What it would look like, that's right.
Yeah.
That's much of
Well, for example, one of the challenges we have in world languages is that, um, when kids come into sixth grade, um, they're pretty much at how old? Eleven, locking themselves in for the next, yeah, for the next mult, several years through their high school careers to what language they're gonna take because it, it builds year to year off of sixth grade. We think that's a lot of pressure. However, uh, what happens to us right now is that we don't have enough staffing for students to get into what they're choosing. Um, so then, you know, I think our default kind of, which is nothing wrong with Spanish, um, but I think our kind of default is Spanish, so uh, we need, we believe, we want to make sure we can support those choices that kids want to make. Um, and, you know, as we move forward, it also builds upon a- advanced placement coursework. We did add a section of, um, Mandarin advanced placement this year, so we're always mindful of that. Um, I, you know, I, I think it's a full compliment and a full conversation about what, how we want to support programming. Um, you know, we haven't really asked very specifically with staff, uh, what their views are with leadership, so we have that community feedback, we have but I think this is a great opportunity for us to now start having these discussions, so, but we've tried to accommodate for that in these placeholder numbers.
And I think one of the things that I've noticed, and might be stepping on your second question, no, that was your second. Um, I think one of the things that I've always been impressed by is how, given the resourcing that we have, we actually do manage to deliver quite a few experiences around honors and AP that I think other districts might fall short on. There are certainly gaps, I think, in, in what we have. Um, but I think given the funding level, we've always done the best we can to try and offer as many things as possible. I believe that there is an opportunity with increased funding, as has been outlined on this list that was very hard to read on the screen for me. Um, sorry, I, I clearly need new glasses.
Or power cord.
Right, but, um, no, I'm, I'm still up, but, no, it's fine, I've got, I, um, but one of the things I think we need, we need to really look into is, you know, where continue to listen to where our educators and our students and our families, you know, think there are things they'd like to see, right?
Yeah.
Um, I think my, since I got on this committee, you know, a year and a half ago, my theme has been we shouldn't not be doing things because of a lack of resources. We should at least say, we asked for the resources, right? That we believe we need to deliver the academic programming, um, that we'd like to see. Right, and I think we've done a really great job, um, with recent budgeting in trying to ask for at least a portion of the things. And then acknowledging that this list is still many, many rows long, um, fifty-eight rows long, and that there are other areas in which if we had additional funding, we could make strategic investments, so.
Okay, that's, and, um, one of the things too that is just so important that we're trying to do more of is get more current and relevant with some of our courses as we expand, with some are accessed by multi-levels of students, but like Frank said around the, you know, we saw the great presentation on the science and what they're doing with when you're bringing in more innovative and current things that are happening, and certainly, you know, computer science, like Frank mentioned, is a place to grow, so there certainly would be honors and AP work with those things, but it's also just that idea of like authentic and relevant to what's happening when they go to college and the world, um, you know, is a big piece of our thinking around what more do we offer and what, and what do we do to make it meaningful to the students, and of course, to everybody's point, like getting that data straight from them is so important, and balancing that with, you know, we research with colleges, we research with employers, what they're looking for, so that we're also preparing them because they don't know yet what they don't know about. So we want to balance what they're interested in and what is important to them with also what's relevant for their futures. So that's hopefully what we hope, so it's place holders, hopefully what we hope to dive into with some of that work.
And since we now have two student reps at the table, I just wanted to notice that sorry, I didn't want to step on your toes, but we've had a, a, a new student rep join our table. Do you wanna?
Yeah, I'm Julia, I'm a junior, and I just came from there.
So
Well, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
And it sounds like, you know, probably what you're hearing already around the table is that, you know, in terms of making connections to the community that you're representing here, there's always, there are always going to be questions at this table that you can help us to answer, and so this is definitely starting to go down the, the path of something that, you know, in terms of in your meetings at school, um, in the communications you have with your, your colleagues and peers, you know, bringing back information to us is always super helpful. Um, so please, you know, can sort in, in the ways that you're able to sort of listen and then go out and ask the questions and be our eyes and ears on the ground, um, again, to continue the work, it's really helpful, so.
Yeah.
Sorry, I stepped on your toes.
Thank you, you're welcome. I, I was just going to ask Dr. Ellen, um, you know, for a long time, we focused on alternative pathways to success too. And we've not really found a good way to reach back out authentically to wide numbers of our graduates and say, what was valuable about your college experience? Because now sitting in the position of having two college students as an end of two.
Yeah.
But, um, hearing their experiences with, um, Winchester High School and what their college experience is, I think that's important too, because I think as parents, community members, we view like AP or honors as the, the pathway, that's the be all, the end all to college success, but I, I'm glad to hear that as part of this process, we will be reaching out sort of to colleges and um, co- counselors and things like that also, because sometimes what we perceive kids need
Yeah.
to be successful in college may not be what they actually need when they get there.
Yeah.
So I want to make sure that when we're talking about success and talking about, like, um, academic strong academics in our high school, that we're also thinking about those alternative pathways and the things that opportunities we can offer kids that don't just make more curriculum,
Yeah.
but deeper thinking and opportunities that, um, will really help them develop their pathway in college or their next steps.
Yeah, and current, what's out there currently. And we did ask the high school last year to start collecting students personally in all addresses before they left so that we can send out surveys to our graduates, so we have a way to contact them to, to get more of that feedback.
That's great.
More to come.
Already ready here.
The night is young. All right, um, next up we have, uh, goodness, now I can't see.
It's the first reading.
Okay, we are just looking, taking up a first reading of policy, um, from sections D and L. So policy had been a few times this summer. And I believe we had spoken about this a little bit at our last meeting. One of the sections that we have worked on was section D around fiscal management. And previously we had received, um, updates on purchasing and procurement from the attorney general and school committees already voted those. These updates for the, um, for section D were more around budget planning and adoption. Grants and proposals, signatories, accounting and reporting, um, audits, et cetera. There was a lot of information that had come in from the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees because they have been doing their own policy manual update. So this was incorporating, so there is a summary in your binder of the policies that we looked at in section D. And then there is the redlined version of all of those policies, um, just including all the verbiage that have been included from the MASC. That is the same for, you will see in the second memo in your pol- in your policy, right, your binder. That we also, that in, in another meeting, um, policy subcommittee had also taken up section K on community relations and section L on educational agency relationships. K is not on our list for tonight, but it is in our memo. So, um, some of these were, and I guess with this bucket, um, of policies, there were, there were a few that were just no changes, um, that pol- that policy subcommittee had made no changes to those policies, so we just made note of them here, um, a few with minor changes and then a few with a few additions or unaddition, um, that was on social media. And then one policy for deletion, so you have these in your binders, um, if you can work through them. And if you have questions, please feel free to reach out. And we'll take them up in our next meeting.
Yes, and I think we may ask in the next meeting, given the fact that the memo that the memo currently covers, that the committee is able to review tonight, currently covers D, K and L. But the agenda for tonight does not specifically call out a first reading for section K. It would be my recommendation, if the committee concurs with this, to waive the first reading of section K. It was just omitted from the agenda tonight, but, um, we might, if the committee has the pleasure of, or agrees to, to us doing that, that we would vote D, K and L next time and waive the technical first reading on K, because it was actually in the committee's binder for tonight.
On the twenty fifth.
Just, thank you, my humble suggestion.
I just said, thank you for the clarification on the twenty fifth, because we may have a meeting in between.
Yes, sorry, the next currently scheduled meeting.
Yes, currently scheduled, and I, I do think the, the committee probably ought to, depending on what we can carve out for time next week. And what's really lined up for the twenty fifth, um, we, you may wanna think about what does that agenda on the twenty fifth look like? If, if it back, we can get some additional time next week, that some of these items could actually be knocked out as well. So just to throw that out there, oh, you know, it would, you know, it's hard to meet three weeks in a row for you. So to be efficient if we can, you know, but it may not be possible.
And I just wanna say, you know, having been the other member of the policy subcommittee, um, for those of you that have been here for longer and some that have been here for the past six months, um, the project that our chair has undertaken under the review of policies is really enormous, right? In many cases, a lot of these policies have not been revisited for ten years now, and so the sort of a lot of the things that we are currently reviewing are things that the chair has been actually working on for two or three years. To try and go through and take the things that are coming in from MASC, the places where suggestions have been made in the past. And policy subcommittee's job is basically to review all of that, determine that it's ready for prime time, it's ready to come to the full committee for a vote. And so credit to those both, Dr. Hackett, Dr. Dr. Hackett's first former executive assistant, the chair of the committee and chair of the policy subcommittee for, for moving this stuff forward, so. You know, to Dr. Hackett's point, this should be fairly quick, as long as everybody's able to read the things that are currently in the binder, there are two very clear memos about how this was all to be rolled out and hopefully we can move on this fairly quickly at our next meeting.
You're making, you're making all our dreams come true, having worked for the neck of four years on these policies.
But then there's.
There are more to come.
But that's so exciting.
Every time we keep bringing a piece forward, it feels like now that just authorizes us to go on to the next piece, so.
Thank you. We have next an executive session, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Um, as the chair declares, an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position out of the committee. We, um, will be returning to open session after that.
So I would move that the committee move into executive session for purpose three, uh, mindful of the fact that we will be returning in open session to vote item eight, um, on the agenda for tonight.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is where the student reps can go home.
Yes.
Agreement. I would accept a motion. I moved.
Do you want, you have to actually redo the motion.
Oh, um, I moved to adopt the tenden- tentatively agreed upon contract with Unity that we discussed with Dr. Hackett, um, for acceptance by the committee.
For the three, right?
For the three year.
As presented.
As presented.
As presented. Second.
All in favor and this is a roll call vote. Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
Mr. Yarje.
Aye.
Dr. Matthew.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous and we have ratified Unity's collective bargaining.
Thank you so much to our representative, superintendent, and mostly our Unity members who do a lot of hard work for our, our district.
I often say, if I was on a deserted island, I would want an elementary admin assistant with me. They make miracles happen and I, I.
And have the most executive function.
But you're gonna go and ask them where any student is and they'll tell you, oh, they just went to the bathroom on the third floor.
And knowing this one, he's gonna be in there a while. Sorry, sorry.
All right, um.
I would move to adjourn our meeting.
All in favor? All right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Win Tam.